Good afternoon. This is Wednesday, May 1st, and it's 12 o'clock right now. And we are ready to begin the Athens City Planning Commission meeting for this date. As I look to my left and to my right, I see that all five of the commission members are present, so we have a full quorum. I would like, and we have several people here that are attending the meeting, and so I would like to ask anybody who would like to possibly present or speak at this to raise their right hand and repeat, or basically indicate by a yes, that you are prepared to tell the truth to the best of your knowledge with any comments that you make today. Say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Okay. So, we have a quorum, and the oath has been administered. The first item on the agenda is the minutes for the April 3rd meeting. So, we didn't have a second meeting in April, and so we need to accept the minutes from that first April meeting. I think everybody received them by email, and I think everybody has them here today. Are there any comments, any corrections, any thoughts that need to be added at this So, hearing none, I would accept a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept and a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. And also, we got a fifth "aye." Chris Nysley had stepped out of the office, but she came in and indicated she votes in favor of accepting them. So, it's 5-0. Okay. So, we have a couple of cases today. The first one is case number 24-03, changes to the Athens City Code. I believe we may have, I believe our planner, Ms. Jennings, has a presentation here that she would like to make as we introduce the discussion on this particular case.
Yes. So, this case 2403 includes changes to both Title 21 and Title 23. My presentation mostly covers the changes in Title 23, which are related to the bulk controls. And David has previously spoken on the changes to Title 21, but looking at making subdivisions outside of city limits a little easier and more in line with existing Ohio Revised Code. So, that is the material included on the first page of our proposed changes related to Title 21. I'll go ahead and jump into my presentation where we dive into the changes to the bulk Our main change, or I guess our main goal with changing the bulk controls is to begin addressing housing affordability issues. I just put together this presentation to review the research and the reasoning behind the proposed changes to these bulk controls, and I'm only covering the proposed changes to the residential zones in this presentation, as the proposed changes to the business and industrial zones are more minimal. And so, I just wanted to review the changes in the residential code in detail. So, first, these proposed changes allow for more dense development and more efficient use of our existing land and infrastructure. More efficient development allows for a greater range in housing affordability. And I also want to address that these changes will not fix housing affordability issues, but they are a great first step. Many groups and organizations are passionate about housing affordability here in Athens, and we want to partner with them on more solutions. So, these bulk controls are just one step in that process. Regarding Title 21, there are some changes that needed to be made to Table 1, and these are the minimum lot development requirements related to residential development within Athens County and Athens City. This table is our subdivision regulations, which establish minimum requirements for land subdivision, both within city limits and the three-mile contiguous jurisdictional area. And the table is kind of duplicative to what we have existing in our bulk controls in Title 23. So, we are proposing changes with this table in Title 21 in order to eliminate the duplication and potential for confusion when people are looking at what site development regulations exist within city limits. So, that will be, the table there is on the second page of the proposed text changes. You can see we're striking out the language related to city zoning. In replacement of that, we are changing the title of that table to say, clarify that these are for in the county within our three-mile jurisdictional area. And we are also then referring people to the bulk controls in Title 23 for lot development requirements for residential within the city. So, those are the proposed changes within Title 21 related to that table. Not included in my slides, there is another table of lot development regulations in regards to development on steep slopes. This table is at the bottom of the fourth page of our proposed changes. They are related to minimum hillside requirements. David and I looked at this table and determined that it is no longer needed with our proposed changes to the bulk controls, and that this table is actually more restrictive than what we are currently proposing for our bulk controls. And with his experience in reviewing development with that table, we were able to determine that table is no longer needed. Moving on to the table of bulk controls in Title 23. David brought these to you a couple of meetings ago, the first draft of the proposed changes to the bulk controls. Over the past few weeks, he and I have researched and refined our proposed changes and have included the business and industrial zones as well. Our proposed changes generally reduce the minimum lot sizes and adjust the yard setbacks. We then checked our math to revise the allowable lot coverages in order for them to be sufficient for the updated allowable building envelopes on each property. So, our research looked at best practices outside of Athens, but also in our own backyard. And our proposal includes gentle increases in density and brings more viability and compatibility between the residential zones. To briefly review our existing bulk controls for the R1 zone, the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet. The minimum lot width is 66 feet. The minimum front yard is 25 feet. And then, our side yards are an 820, which is interesting. In total, both yards have to equal 20 feet, but one side yard can be a minimum of eight feet. So, that's kind of how that split has worked. The local examples that I pulled for this presentation, R1 is our predominant residential zone, and all of these local examples are actually in the R1 zone. I didn't mean to do that, but that's how it worked out. The numbers that I have represented here on the screen are averages across multiple lots in the vicinity of the locational context that I've pulled. The front yard setbacks, I just want to clarify, include porches. So, that's a 20-foot of yard, and then you hit a porch, and then your main structure. And the last thing I'd like to mention is that the side yard values that I report in my slides vary on each property due to the previous one slash both side yard requirements that I just reviewed, that 820 split. So, this first example is on Elmwood Place. I had reported earlier, our existing R1 minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet, minimum lot width is 66 feet. These properties on Elmwood average about 7,500 square feet and a 50-foot lot width, which are not compliant with our existing R1 zone. And then, they do represent a 20-foot front yard setback and a 7-foot side yard setback, and on average, and neither of those meet our existing R1 setbacks. I also pulled from Morris Avenue, where we have slightly smaller lots, and then slightly closer front yard setbacks, comparable side yard setbacks, but again, these lots are existing non-conformities essentially in our R1 zone. Another example is South May Avenue, even smaller lots and lot widths, even closer setbacks and side yards. I also looked down the west side and looked at Second Street, a little bit more regular lotting pattern there. And these lots are about 5,000 square feet in size, a little wider, I'm assuming because of the slope there, but also still closer to the road and about comparable side yards. And then, and the last example is Avon Place over on the far east side neighborhood. These lots are a little larger, it's 6,000 square feet, and they do have wider lot widths of 55 feet, comparable front yard setbacks, and slightly larger side yard setbacks. The first place I actually went for best practices outside of our local examples is the Stimson Avenue Corridor Plan that American Structure Point put together for the city just this fall. They, within their plan, they, American Structure Point, proposed bulk controls for single-family, two-family, and multifamily that would be applicable for that Stimson Avenue corridor. Reviewing Structure Point's proposals, we felt that these standards were applicable across the community of Athens, not just the Stimson Corridor. And this table that I have on the screen is their proposal for bulk controls for the single-family lots or developments. What they have proposed is a 4,000-square-foot lot size, a 40-foot lot width. For their setbacks, their front yard setbacks, they're proposing a five-foot minimum and a 10-foot maximum. And then, 10 feet between homes, which is on average a five-foot side yard, comparable rear yard of 20 feet, and a building height should be about 35 feet, is what American Structure Point proposed. Throughout our proposal, and I'll review it more in detail in a little bit, but we do kind of bring their proposals forward as we think it's appropriate across the community of Athens. This is a 3D model that American Structure Point put together for that plan, and I thought it was a good image to bring into this presentation and just help visually interpret what these bulk controls mean in a 3D reality. They also put together a model for their, the two-family or the duplex development. We carried forward the lot development requirements that are represented here. It is a 50-foot lot width with two units on the structure, I'm sorry, on the property, and then a five-foot side yard is represented here as well. I think because Athens is lacking a lot of duplexes in the physical, I thought bringing forward this model was really helpful to help interpret what the duplexes could look like in our R2 zones. And I also found this example online of just kind of a more contextual reality of what that type of duplex could look like. Our current duplex regs are restrictive, and duplexes are a key part of adding variety to housing affordability. And so, we think that these proposed changes to the R2 zone will really allow duplexes to be a more viable option within our neighborhoods. After looking at the Stimson Avenue Corridor Plan, I also pulled from a couple communities that I'm familiar with, both Haversham, which is in Beaufort County, South Carolina, and then also a neighborhood in Lexington, Kentucky. We don't have a lot of examples locally of kind of what we're proposing with our change bulk controls, so I wanted to bring these other examples forward, so we have some more photos and context for what this type of development could look like. A lot of these feature similar lot widths, but as you can see here in Haversham, their lot sizes are on average about 5,000 square feet, so they have slightly deeper lots than what we are proposing. I do want to communicate that the majority of our bulk controls are minimum standards, so these properties can be developed slightly larger if desired, but I did just want to kind of clarify those numbers for you. Next, just some market examples of homes in Haversham and general square footages, and also a number of bedrooms, just so you kind of have a context for what kind of families could be supported in these residences. These homes are single stories. If not, they may have a loft, but they do provide a lot of square feet and also at an affordable price point, since they're on slightly smaller lots. And these are the types of products that we could get with these proposed changes to our bulk controls. Reducing our minimum lot sizes and setbacks allows for more affordable single-story construction, which could aid in more affordable ADA-accessible and age-in-place residential development as well, moving forward. The other example that I pulled from is Lexington, Kentucky. A lot of my professional experience has been in Lexington, and I'm familiar with this neighborhood in particular. Actually, really wanted to try to buy a home there, but it was very difficult because they were very popular. These are smaller lots, and you'll see here, they have a 35-square-foot lot size. They're successful, though, because the neighborhood itself includes a community open space. And so, these homes have small rear courtyards and also rear access garages off of an alleyway. But the smaller lot size works for this community because they have that community open space. But other lot size, lot dimensions are comparable to kind of what we are proposing here with our bulk controls. And then, just similar data here with these two homes, about comparable sizes of 1,800 square feet and 1,200 square feet, same number of bedrooms, but just to kind of provide some additional context for what type of units we could be providing with these proposed Now, onto the fun stuff. So, we are not proposing any new uses. We are only updating dimensions for what we have existing. Just as a reminder, these are minimum standards, so it can be developed larger if needed besides the maximum front yard and maximum lot coverages, but variances can always be an option there as well. The main changes that we have proposed in the R1 zone are reducing the minimum lot size to 4,000 square feet and the minimum lot width to 40 feet. We are also proposing a 10-foot minimum front yard and a 20-foot maximum front yard. This just allows homes to be, brings homes closer to the street, which helps provide a little bit more of a walkable, approachable community context, but also still respects our existing setbacks in our neighborhoods. The other big change is reducing the minimum side yard to five feet rather than that 820 split. That five-foot side yard was carried forward from the American Structure Point recommendations, and is also pretty comparable throughout other communities. Five-foot side yards, I checked with Ohio Building Code, they do allow for windows on the sides of the structure without any fire code issues, so that five-foot setback is, will work and is flexible with Ohio Code. If it was closer to three foot, that's where windows and openings become more restricted with fire code. In general, we also increased the maximum structure and maximum impervious lot coverages. This just allows for the same, similar size of housing product to be built on smaller lots. So, those numbers need to increase in order to kind of match that allowable building envelope. And also, you'll see these numbers, as we increase in zoning, the gentle increases in the density allow for similar housing product and also an increase in required parking as well. Within the R2 zone, you'll see here, our single-family, the one-family use carries up into the R2 zone, but with slightly smaller lot requirements. We have a 3,500 minimum lot size and a 35-foot lot width. And these are just gentle increases in density, which are common when you go up in a zoning And also, I want to clarify that kind of as you go up in zoning category and increase your intensity, most of the uses in the lower zoning categories carry forward. So, that's why you'll see the one-family and the two-family carry forward from R2 to R3. With the two-family, we are reducing the minimum lot size to 5,000 with a minimum lot area per dwelling unit of 2,500. And that's just because there are two units on one property, and so you'll need the minimum 5,000 square feet if you're going to do a duplex. We are proposing the same height, front yard, side yard, and rear yard requirements as what is in the R1, what we're proposing in the R1. So, the R1 and R2 will be fairly compatible on one adjacent to each other. And here, you'll see the lot coverages do increase a little bit from the R1 in order to accommodate comparable structure sizes and also a slight increase in the required Within the R3, I'll just briefly cover the one-family and two-family proposals. Again, just slightly smaller lot sizes. The one-family goes down to 3,000 square feet, and we are maintaining that same, the same front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks, but we are proposing that in the R3, you increase the height to 45 feet or three and a half stories. That's just one level up from the R1 and the R2 zones. Again, the lot coverages increase as before. Then, we go into the multifamily bulk controls here. The biggest changes with these uses are looking at that minimum lot size. Previously, for both apartments and the non-residential and mixed uses, the minimum lot size was 10,000 square feet. We are maintaining the same value for lot area per dwelling unit, that's 1,250 square feet per dwelling unit. With that 10,000 value for an apartment building, say, if you wanted to build an apartment building in the R3, the minimum number of units you could build is eight. That cuts out a large in-between section of housing product that could be built. You basically go from one family to duplexes to an eight-unit apartment building. That's kind of our scale up there. So, with our changes here, reducing that to 5,000 square feet allows for fourplexes to be built. And that is a more, allows for a little bit more compatibility between the residential uses, and it's also a missing housing product that we don't have here in Athens right now. So, those are the biggest changes that we made within the R3 zone. And of course, if the developer wants more units, then that minimum lot size increases due to that lot area per dwelling unit requirement. So, if an eight-unit apartment building did want to come in, they would be required to have a 10,000-square-foot lot. Again, we have the same setbacks as the R1 when it comes to the front yard, side yard, and rear yard, but we are maintaining that 45 or three-and-a-half-story height requirement there. And then, again, the lot coverages increase as well. Then, I put together, because numbers are hard to imagine in a 2D sense even, so I've put together this scale looking at the allowable building envelope. Not sure if my mouse shows up on the screen. So, from left to right, we phase from the R1 up through the R3. And these are just the minimum requirements. So, we've got the minimum lot widths and lot sizes, and also minimum setbacks here. I've got the variable front yard kind of in a darker shade on the bottom of each lot, but I just wanted to show this image to set an example that these can be comparable between the zones. The size and the volume of these structures don't vary much as we change between the One thing I did want to mention, the redevelopment of existing lots with these new bulk controls, I just wanted to throw out some numbers in case there are any worries that people are going to come in and really intensify the density. So, with existing 60-foot lots... So, with existing 60-foot lots, 60-foot lot widths, if you were to buy two of those properties, then you would be able to, and this is within the R1 zone, you would be able to build three new homes. If you were to buy three existing homes, you could build back four and 1/2 homes. And if you were to buy four 60-foot wide lots, then you could build back six of our new proposed lots. Within the 50-foot lots, it's comparable to two existing to two and 1/2 new and four existing to five new. So, just to give some numbers to help kind of add a little bit more context for redevelopment. The next section that David and I wanted to include proposed changes to is in regards to averaging the front yard setbacks. This provision already existed in our code. We just added additional language in order to provide flexibility. This section just acknowledges that if you're redeveloping a vacant lot or you're redeveloping an existing lot, the new home, and since these bulk controls, the new minimum front yard, minimum, maximum front yards do vary fairly significantly from what was previously allowed, this provision kicks in and allows that new home to average those existing setbacks so that the new structure can be compatible and also respect the existing homes. So, this language in particular reads that the required front yard setback of a redevelopment or the development of a vacant lot shall be no more than 5 feet in front of or no more than 5 feet behind the average building line as established by the closest principal buildings and on either side of the subject property. The rest of the text just talks about pulling like the distance from the subject property that you have to respect those existing setbacks, so you don't have to match a setback of a home that's 500 feet away, essentially. We included this language in particular because some of these changes can feel drastic when you're looking at the infill development, and the averaging of these setbacks just allows former compatible and respectful infill development. That is the information that I've pulled together for you all today, and I'm happy, we're happy to answer any questions with these changes that the commission may have at this time.
Mayor?
Yeah, I have a question. And Director Riggs, you might be able to help me with a part of this question. The new Memorial Hospital that has been built, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a four-story structure, is it not?
Yes.
And I drive up and down 33 like all of us do, and I keep looking through the gaps to see, you know, how big is this building? Is it disrupting my view shed? I came down Terrace Drive, which is a pretty steep, actually, it's probably the steepest street in the city of Athens, but again, drove down that to see, one, how's it looking these days, but number two, as I was going down, I wanted to see, again, has the view shed changed, you know, with that hospital, because I figured it would probably be seen from that drive. It really hasn't. So, here's my question to you, Planner Jennings, is why 3 and 1/2 stories in the multi-housing section as opposed to allowing for a four-story structure? We live in a valley, and when you look at buildings that truly do stand out on our view shed, it's going to be places like Bromley Hall, or it's going to be our six-story parking garage that stands out. But four stories, you know, if we're looking at true density and creating an environment where we have more housing, again, I just need an answer as to why we're saying 3 and 1/2 stories, which unless we're living in the world of being John Malkovich, where we have half-story floors, you know, why?
Yeah. So, we had included the half-story provision because it essentially activates like a gabled roof pitch with that half-story. So, that's why we maintain the half-story was so that the overall shape of the structure could be compatible against or across residential zones. The maximum height, though, I think that both David and I would be happy to talk about that and revise if you feel like it should be taller.
Yeah, one of the things we were looking at is trying to be respectful for the existing structures that are out there. So, if you have like a one-story ranch and you put a four-story house next to it, it could be an issue. So, we were just concerned about that, but we'll follow any advice you guys have.
Which we have, I don't know.
I think, I don't mean to speak out of turn here, but I think what the mayor was speaking about was specifically your last table.
The apartment.
So, we're talking about R3 apartment rooming house, not R3, single-family, R3, double, two-family, not R2, not R1. It's, and for the point of allowing for more density in those areas.
You're not speaking out of turn. That's exactly what I meant.
Yeah. Yeah, so not like to Chris's point about, you know, that did happen in a certain extent on the East Side, it wouldn't be applicable there. And I do have another point to make, or this is just a clarification, you know, this is somewhat rhetorical, but I just want to validate. So, the beginning of your presentation, you said that the near East Side and the far East Side, arguably the most desirable portions of this community, currently don't remotely comply with our current bulk controls.
Yes, the examples that I pulled from Elmwood, Morris, and May don't currently comply, and then the examples I pulled from the far East Side are close, but still don't comply.
I think that really validates why we're trying to do this. Thank you.
If I could interject just real quick on that, along that same point, we've also talked about how many border zoning appeals cases we get, which are almost always setbacks or bulk, or the coverage of bulk controls. And if you see this, those are getting approved, and if you see this continually coming up again and again, this is something that the neighborhood or the community wants, but our code currently doesn't allow that. So, we think with these changes, we'd see a lot less requests for variances, and it'd be more compatible with what the communities in the city of Athens want.
The only recommendation I had was in the R1 and Table A was to get rid of the maximum. I understand the intention is to bring homes closer, but you also have, if you think outside of the downtown area, if you're on Lavelle, if you're on a busier road and you want to sit back further, I don't think we should be restricting the ability for a house to sit further back on, you know, a non-downtown lot, if that makes sense.
I have a question on that, sir. I have a question to that point. I would tend to agree with him, however, how do you prevent in that setting for someone who, with that other change, as far as like improved lots being next door, how would you prevent the house that's this, you know, 40 feet back from the road from having a house built next door that's 70 feet back from the road and then they're looking in their back window? Because I've seen that in other communities as well. We wouldn't want to have a situation like that.
I think this averaging provision would require that new home to be built up closer to that existing 40-foot setback home. So, you wouldn't get something way back behind.
So, if we struck the portion, the maximum, as a member of Phillips was talking about, that averaging provision would still prevent that from happening.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Great job, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is helpful, and your explanation helped with questions I had when I was giving it earlier. I have three of these questions. One was about the tables, and so it would be five foot, 5 feet on the side for each lot. So, we have two houses, 5 foot each side, so that would be 10 feet, let's say, the distance between them.
Yes.
Which is close, but.
Let me piggyback on that. Does, do I sense that the, that you're allowed to construct in that 5-foot setback with a side porch?
No.
No?
No, but you will have, if you had like a bay window or eaves that can extend into...
Overhangs off the roof?
It could extend into that, yes, based on our current code.
And the front would be the same? You can't build the porch into the front setback?
No, you cannot.
Right.
Okay. I just wasn't sure when I was looking at some of the models that were built, you know, what that meant exactly. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So, the other two questions are probably brief. One, that you talked about removing the hillside requirements. If you could explain that a little bit, because does it exist elsewhere? And it's something that people worked on a lot over the years to try and protect the hillsides, knowing how prone and sluggish we are. The second question was about parking, and you made a reference to required parking. And I can remember your predecessor, Paulo, who dearly said, "We don't want to build our community for parking." And so, we can let go of some of these on-street parking requirements, or off-street parking requirements. So, those two questions, hillside and parking.
So, let me tackle the first one, which is the hillside development. And the reason that was created was because on very steep slope developments, it may be difficult to meet the 20, at the current 25-foot setback. So, this would actually allow you to build a house closer to the, closer to the front, closer to the road. Because it's really steep, you have to, you'd have to really cut back. It was trying to protect those hillside slopes. So, what it did was it allowed you to build closer than the minimum required 25-foot setback to the road. With our new changes, you are going to be allowed to build closer, so that's really kind of a moot point at that place. It doesn't matter what the slope is, you can get within 10 to 20 feet of the, of the front of your lot closer to the road. So, it really kind of, it kind of did away with the need for that.
So, it's not negating our attention as a city to hillside...
No, it's not, yeah.
...protection. But in this particular case, it's...
The idea was originally, that you'd have to cut the hillside to get the house back to meet the minimum requirement. So, it was allowing you some variance to that front 25-foot setback, and now we don't need that.
Regarding the parking, the comp plan does call out that we need to revise our parking regulations. That's going to be a big task and require a lot of research and also public input. And so, the reason why I mentioned the required parking in my presentation is because those requirements still currently exist. Even though our community is looking to change those, I did want to acknowledge that we currently do require the parking that we do in our code.
And a couple of years ago, you know, we did make a lot of changes to those parking requirements, significantly reducing those, but there's still, there's still a need to do more.
So, regarding the parking, in the one lot comparison slide that you had, does that basically tell me that the parking is a garage that's a part of the structure in that particular, in those examples?
If it was the minimum, very minimum, yeah, that would probably be the only way you could do off-site parking, would be a garage in the front.
And you would be required, right now at least, to have some off-site parking.
To, to...
Two spaces.
Two spaces, yeah.
The lot comparison graphic that I put together, the colored space that wasn't lawn just shows the allowable area on each lot that a structure could be built on.
Right.
So, if you wanted to have a detached garage in the rear and have a driveway that ran up the side, you would still be meeting your minimum side yard.
The building would need to be narrower, though, probably.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, you could put the driveway on the 5-foot side yard setback, or no?
You can't have the driveway in the side yard setback.
Okay. Yes.
A question about accessory structures that I know that you said, different matter, we'll talk about it later, just like you'll talk about parking later. My only question is, is the percentage of allowable square footage, do we, I don't know. Are we making for problems by allowing how much of the lot can be covered with a building structure and not allowing for accessible structures? So, now, you're going to have a whole raft of, if people wanted to build an accessory structure where somebody could reside in it, then they say, "Oh, we're going to have to go against zoning variances to get it approved." So, I don't know. I guess it would be an argument for...
I'm not sure the lot coverage would restrict that enough. If somebody was going to, that happens all the time, they do that anyway, regardless of, you know, of the lot, total lot coverage. That doesn't seem to restrict the people that want to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, a little bit more on the hillside issue that you discussed. You know, so, an example, you know, so I drive by and I look at what's going on on East State Street where we have that house that we're, the property behind, where we are going to have Starbucks and Chipotles and the significant amount of work being done there. Let's say, for example, somebody wanted to do something on Briarwood, you know, and there's a drop-off on one side and the hillside on the other, and they wanted to build back into it. We are, and let's assume that based on the lot size, they really don't need any kind of a variance for that, but yet, they're going to be digging deeply into the hillside behind it. How are we protecting that?
Yeah, we do have other, we're not removing all of the hillside requirements for development. So, this is just the front setback piece of it. There's a lot of other requirements for hillside development. We also have zones of slip-prone soils. When those happen, especially in developments, we ask the developer to do engineered studies to make sure that we don't have any issues with that, because we know we've got slippy soils in Athens, right? So, we have to be careful of that.
So, in that case, that's an R1, and you would, they would still be required, even though they're just building a single-family house, to, you know, make sure they're dealing with the slip-prone soils.
We've done that several times. Currently, yeah, currently, and just recently, we've done that several times, ask a builder to provide engineered documents that say that the foundation and what they're doing is going to be engineered safely.
Any other questions? Motion. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to recognize a document that we did receive from a citizen in Athens, and it's basically a letter of support for this effort. The individual also serves on the Athens Affordable Housing Commission, and a lot of what's been said at the dais today and from both the planner and the director of code enforcement and development, speaks to non-conformant, currently non-conforming properties. Again, just wanted to enter that into the record that we did receive a letter of support.
Before I entertain the idea of a motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Rob Gellich, Level 124 Morris Avenue, here in the city of Athens. So, I love this proposal. I like its sort of incremental approach, too, that it's a good step in the right direction. It's pretty easy to do. It's not controversial, it seems, really. So, I think this is a really good first step to try to ease development, make it easier for developers to put in small incremental developments, you know, infill in our neighborhoods. Also, maybe enabling some larger developments at the same time. That's all great. I actually like the maximum front setback addition. It still could be a zoning variance if there was a problem with that, I think retaining it and then allowing that for a zoning variance. And I do chair the border zoning appeals right now for the city, and we do mostly like Mr. Riggs said, see variances for side setbacks, a lot of front setbacks, a number for porches, front porches, and that's what I want to talk a little more about here. So, communities require many things, slow, walkable streets with sidewalks, places to walk to, people to see and interact with, city code permits, houses snuggled close together, and having a community like that requires porches, too. Combining porches and sidewalks together in close proximity, and you have the building blocks of community. I live in an near East Side neighborhood. I love my neighborhood. I love front porches in the neighborhood because they provide opportunities for social interactions, support for neighbors and passersby, and a sense of community and belonging. Front porch on my house was a major criteria for buying the house that I live in on Morris Avenue, and if you don't believe me, so, I'm organizing this event, which is the neighborhood, Near East Side Neighborhood Porch Fest. So, it's a music festival, 20 bands, local music playing on porches, and two local businesses. So, 14 porches and two businesses in the neighborhood, June 30th, Sunday, June 30th, noon to 9:00. So, I invite you all to attend. It's open to the public and it's all free. So, I think the key, though, is that we have a neighborhood that you could do something like this because there are porches and they're in close proximity to the sidewalk, and they're accessible and they can be used then by the public directly or indirectly. And they're accessible and they can be used then by the public directly or indirectly. So, what better way to showcase the neighborhood, a great neighborhood like the Near East Side, with an event like this? But my concern is the proposal, I don't think goes quite far enough in this one example. I don't think it quite goes far enough with enabling people to build and rebuild homes in the neighborhood with front porches that are close enough to the sidewalk. So, something to keep in mind, a front setback of 10 feet from the city's right-of-way is functionally an average of 15 feet from the sidewalk if you include that you have to include the steps. So, it's not the front of the house like President Stikowski--
Kowalski.
Stikowski? See, I do that long all the time.
We don't say your last name right either, Rob.
Had mentioned, but it's not just that the front porch is included, but also the front steps are included. So, that's really restricted in a lot of ways. So, my front porch is 17 feet from the sidewalk. It's about eight feet. So, it's within the 10-foot proposed, currently 25, which is crazy. So, could I rebuild my house the way it is currently with the new proposal? Yes. But if you start looking at-- actually, no, it's still two feet, two feet too close. So, if you start looking at other houses in the neighborhood, and I've done some math on some of those, just general approximations. But let me say one more thing first, I think. Here, let's see. So, 17 feet from the sidewalk is the current status. So, a recent piece in USA Today, for example, cites porches as part of a solution to America's problem with loneliness. But what is an acceptable conversational distance between porch and sidewalk? I've seen recommendations of 12 feet. There's not a lot of science, I think, done on this, maybe. I didn't find a whole lot to try and find what that number should be. But I saw 10 to 15 feet is sort of the range I was seeing. And my porch is just outside that, technically, right now. I have lots of conversations with people walking by, because it is, I think, just close enough. But so, how close is too close? An average setback of five feet, a five-foot setback would functionally be 10 feet if you include an average step width. Ours is a little-- because our porch is higher, it depends on how high the porch is, how many steps you need. But if you say an average of five feet, so, a five-foot setback would functionally be 10-foot setback. Am I making sense? So, the 10-foot setback is what's proposed.
Yes.
It's really functionally five feet is what it comes to. Am I still saying that right? No, it's the other way around, it's functionally 15 feet.
15?
Yeah. It's functionally 15 feet. So, I looked at some of the houses in the neighborhood, I just picked four neighborhood faces. My front-facing street, the 13 homes on that street and then four others, just semi-randomly. And 90% of those are currently non-compliant with front setbacks. If you change this regulation to make it 10-foot front setback, still over half would not be compliant with that. So, that's, I think, still not-- we're not quite good enough, in other words. My house would not be compliant. Seven of the houses on my block would not be compliant. And about half of the rest. I looked at Elmwood, May, and Sunnyside, I think, is the other one. And just one block example. And over half, 30 out of 58 that homes that I looked at, front setbacks, even with the new change to 10 feet, would still be non-compliant, in other words, not really close enough, allowing them close enough to the sidewalk, I don't think.
Is that-- so, what about the averaging? You know, if you were building on a lot between your home and another home, you could actually get out a little further, could you not, if the-- based on the averaging or the--
So, this actually depends on what we're talking about. If we're talking about the steps being included in the setback, that's actually another section of the code. That's 230314, which talks about steps and stoops. So, if you wanted to make some changes to allow steps in the setback, you may want to think about changing that portion of the code and not the front setback, would be my suggestion.
So, what would be the-- if you want-- if we wanted to make more of them compliant, would it be increasing the setback to 15?
So, my suggestion before that comment--
Or no, decreasing?
I would suggest making it five feet instead of 10.
Five feet.
If you look at some of the setback examples from Megan Jennings' proposal, the other examples that were sort of best practices were more like five feet. Even the one, I think, from Stimson was five feet, their recommendation. So, I would say five feet. If you change the stoop-- step requirement, though, that maybe solves a problem, I think that's a good approach. If that should be considered. So, anyway, I'd like to consider that. I think that we're close, and I love this proposal. All the other setbacks work really well. There's a few exceptions, maybe 2% of the houses I looked at, side setbacks were at issue with the new proposal. But you're going to get some of that. That's minor.
So, North Carolina and Lexington both were five foot?
I think so.
Yep. I'm looking at the example.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, Mayor.
I just want to say that I appreciate your comments, and I think maybe by looking at the steps and stoops portion of code, that that's a proper angle to take to where if you were to lose your home and you build a brand-new one, that you're not having to jump through, push yourself further back from the sidewalk, basically.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this issue? No, okay. So, then, basically, what we're saying here is, let's leave it as is, but have Mr. Riggs and Ms. Jennings look at the idea of adjusting the steps or to deal with the elevated property or the house.
Mr. Chair, I'd actually suggest we make a motion. I have a motion prepared, if you would entertain it.
One thing, so, do we want to-- does your motion include something regarding the four-story versus--
Yes.
Okay. I'm happy to listen to your motion.
All right. I would propose a motion that the commission accept the changes as presented, except for the following. The front yard maximum, as suggested by Member Phillips in the R1, one family is struck from the suggestion. Number two, a change would be that removing uncovered steps from consideration in the front yard setback would be-- would be that basically uncovered steps would not be counted in the setback. And then, the third change from what was proposed would be in the R3 apartment rooming house and non-residential and mixed-use rows, that those heights are changed from 45 and three-and-a-half stories to 55 and four-and-a-half stories.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Third.
We need a third.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Case number 24-04 is the next item on the agenda, the review of the Southeast Beverage Warehouse Edition. So, you know, we ask that Member Phillips abstain from voting, but remain here to be able to answer any questions that might occur. Would you-- do you have an introduction-- either of you have an introduction to the--
Yeah, I can do that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
We have-- staff has looked at the proposed plans, didn't have any comments. We send these plans to Engineering Department, to the Police Department, to the Fire Department, to the Planning Department, and to the Code Office, all to look at different aspects of this development. We had no comments to speak of. So, the staff is ready to approve this plan. We did send it also to the shade tree commission, I guess it was three weeks ago. The shade tree commission meets monthly, and at that meeting, they did not have a quorum. Mr. Phillips presented the case, and they recommended that-- I think there was 26 trees on the plan. They recommended that that would be-- or suggested that would be acceptable to them. And so, their recommendation would go back to this board for approval or not of the landscape and tree, shade trees, requirements for this project.
Okay. Does anybody else have any-- any members of the-- have any comments or points they'd like to make? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments? So, hearing none, I would entertain a motion on the proposed addition to the beverage warehouse.
I still move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of approving this motion and allowing the proceeding of the beverage warehouse project addition, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, the passes. Thank you very much. So, the next item on the agenda are communications. And so, we have one item that is on the agenda. It's the tobacco zoning and marijuana dispensary zoning recommendations. And so, I will turn this over to Mr. Riggs and Ms. Jennings to present this-- these proposed changes. Thank you.
So, we brought forward these-- this communication several weeks ago, and so, we're kind of returning to that now. We have refined our proposed language to generally list the use as cannabis establishment. And then, within the proposal here, we have them included as principal permitted uses, but do limit the number of establishments per zone. And then, we do also include a distance requirement that we have carried forward from Ohio Revised Code's distance requirements with medical marijuana distancing. So, we did carry forward those same distances and the uses from which cannabis establishments would have to buffer from. The zones in which we are allowing cannabis establishments as principal permitted uses are the B2 zone, the B2D zone, the B3 zone, and the M zone. For each of these zones, we do limit the number of establishments. Within the B2 zone, we are restricting it to no more than two establishments within the entire B2 zone. Within the B2D zone, we are limiting it to no more than five establishments. Within the B3 zone, we're proposing to limit it to no more than 12 establishments. And then, within the M zone, we are proposing to limit it to no more than five establishments. The exact language for that buffering, I'll read that just for clarity. So, no more than so number of establishments are allowed within each zoning district, and they shall be at least 500 feet from a school, a public library, a public playground, a public park, or any other cannabis establishment. Excuse me, just one second. So, that is the language we're proposing, and happy to answer any questions.
So, one question I have is, you know, as I look at the licensed tobacco locations in the different zones, what you're proposing are different numbers. Why, I guess I would ask?
Those are slightly different. We also looked at the total number of-- the colloquial word is vape stores that are out there, and we thought that would be as appropriate as any for the-- for what may become the recreational cannabis use.
Okay. So, those numbers then match up if you add the vape--
Yes, yeah.
--businesses in.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Are there-- does the commission-- are there any questions or comments from the commission? Mayor?
I just have a comment. I truly appreciate the work that went into this, because we're still seeing some level of guidance coming out from the state when it comes to cannabis establishments. And it's something I've thought a lot about and how we address this. And I really also appreciate the addition to this, which I think a lot of this is following the dispensary guidelines in terms of distance from schools and playgrounds and things of that nature, but also to add to that from other cannabis dispensaries, I think, is smart planning. Because-- yeah, I'll just leave it there.
Yes, Members Stone?
You know, I think another step that this commission could take would be to also put a similar number of limits, maybe a few more, you know, and certainly not create a situation where we would make existing conditions not compliant for state tobacco licensed establishments as well being identified. And when we send this forward to the City Council, that we make that recommendation also, perhaps as two different activities. I know the last time, there was some information that went to City Council about tobacco, there was some, you know, some opposition. I think this is different than what went forward last time, because the last time, what went forward was not from planning commission, but instead was from, you know, the members themselves, the City Council, was to do a local licensing program and collect a fee associated with tobacco. And that was opposed by some businesses in the community and ultimately didn't end up moving forward. I would propose that the team here goes back and makes a similar proposal to limiting the numbers of licensed state tobacco facilities, not a separate licensing program, but licensed state tobacco facilities in the various zones in Athens. And then, we send them to simultaneously towards City Council as changes to the zoning from this body. Because, you know, to the point of, you know, it's certainly, it's a legal business in the state of Ohio, but you don't want your community being overrun by one particular type of business. We can do that.
Clarifying question, for the B3, the 12 licenses you're recommending, those could be concentrated all to one area, correct?
Well, not necessarily, because as you read, we have that 500 feet from another establishment. So, that's typically going to be about a block.
Okay.
So, they would have to be spaced approximately a block apart, if you think I'm like-- think of it like that.
Okay, thanks. I was looking at, like, could State Street have all 12 versus being dispersed over Columbus and Union?
Yeah, we were trying to make sure that we had some separation, and you couldn't do that, have them all in one, a whole bunch of them in one specific location.
Thank you.
Member Nisley?
So, if we're talking about Mr. Stone's recommendation of possibly limiting the number of tobacco outlets, would we put the same kind of no more than 500? Because I think we have some that--
Yeah, and they would be legal non-conforming then.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then, I guess the next step on process, when people apply for these and say there is-- there are two existing tobacco outlets that are closer together than the 500 feet, it would be a first-come, first-served?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
And if the-- an establishment wanted to include the sale of recreational marijuana, could it be within 500 feet of a tobacco retail?
I'm seeing them-- we'll figure that out. I'm trying to see them as two different things, right?
Okay.
So, you could have a company that sells both tobacco products and recreational marijuana, they wouldn't need to be 500 feet apart from themselves.
Okay.
But anything else would need to be 500 feet apart. And then, they also, if they're not, they could still get a denial and request a variance like you can for any zoning decision, right?
So, what I-- let me ask if this is what I'm thinking we ought to do then. We ought to ask that they go back and look at the tobacco items and put together a second proposal for that.
Yeah.
And I'm saying that we could entertain it as a case at our next meeting, or should we just have that piece come in as a communication? I mean, it's going to be very similar, right? I mean, is it inappropriate of us to just go ahead and bring both of them back as a case or two separate cases at the next-- as a, as a case or two separate cases at the next meeting in two weeks?
We think we could get that ready for you if that's the way you'd like to go, yeah.
Is that something we'd like to do or do we want to just more slowly continue to think about this? Go, yes, Mayor?
I think we could do it as a case. We're discussing it right now.
Yes.
And the intent is it would be, it would basically be re-imaging this, which we're discussing, as the cannabis facilities to include tobacco.
Okay. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's, let's do that. Let's, let's bring that back in two weeks as a case then, with the two, the two components as a case. Okay, thank you. Are there any reports today? Mr. Riggs?
I don't have anything further, sir.
Ms. Jennings?
I don't have anything further either.
Do we, do you have something?
I do.
Okay.
And I'll be, I'll be brief. Glad we're saving this for the very end. Director Stone's, Stone, City Planner Jennings and I had the opportunity to go down to, to Vinton County today, to MacArthur, where the governor announced the second round of implementation funding within Southeast Ohio. And I'm pleased to share that the city of Athens will be receiving about $6.5 million for the Uptown Improvements Project, so it'll be a part of our beautification. Equally excited and pleased to hear was that Mount Zion Church is getting $7 million for Mount Zion Church preservation and rehabilitation. And the Southeast Ohio History Center received around roughly $2.5 million for renovations there. So, and I also heard, also sharing with all of you, that another municipality in Athens County, the village of Chancy is receiving several million dollars for downtown, or their village, streetscape. And they're continuing to work with their city park. So Athens County did really well with the second round. As a reminder, we were successful in round one implementation of getting about $2.5 million for the Armory Project as part of the work in Appalachia where it's five facilities in four counties in Southeast Ohio. So exciting news to share.
Wonderful.
That's wonderful. Thank you. So is, does anybody want to speak on any topic that wasn't on the agenda today in the audience? No? Okay. So are there any other announcements that we need to bring forward? Okay. I would like to thank both Ms. Jennings and David Riggs for all the hard work, Mr. Riggs, for all the hard work that they've done on these, these two cases that we have been dealing with. They are very comprehensive. They seem to have been very, very well thought out and we, I really, and I think everybody here really appreciates that, so thank you. Our next meeting is May 16, 15, hold on, here we go, May 15. I need my reading glasses. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.